Is it seven fifteen, I guess it is. Should we get started?
Sure.
Okay.
That's it.
We have fifteen minutes or half hour yet.
We have the sign and sheet.
Do you have an agenda around there someplace?
Uh, yeah.
You can share that with me.
Okay. All right, I'd like to call the Village of Reinbeck Planning Board Meeting for November nineteen, two thousand and three, to order. First thing I have, an announcement. I want to welcome the gentleman to my right, John Fenton, who's our new zoning enforcement officer. He comes to us with great expertise, being the zoning enforcement officer at Aminia and Poughkeepsie, and we welcome John to the group tonight. What we like to do, once we open the public hearing, is the hospital is going to make a presentation of the revised, uh, that happened to the plan, and then we're going to have Cicely Frazier, the chairman of the Village Tree Commission, who we asked to study the plan. The tree commission took a tour of the hospital site, and Cicely has comments on the plan, and then we'll open it up to public comments. We have a sign and sheet at the front door. We have a lot of people tonight, so we're asking everybody, as usual, to try to keep their comments to three minutes, so everyone will get a chance to speak. And now I'd like a motion to open the public hearing.
At least, the chairs are available here in the corners.
Are there...
There's another chair here.
There's one over there.
There's some over there.
Is everyone who wants the seat, you know, to sit, has a seat? Because there's a couple of chairs over here, a couple of chairs on the side over here by the camera.
Sure.
Okay. All right, I have a motion to open the public hearing. Do you have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'd like the hospital to proceed with their presentation.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Jeff King. I'm with Kirchhoff Medical Properties. I would like just to briefly introduce a few members of the team that are here today. So, at some point, if the board has questions, you recognize who is here and can ask specific questions of the team. We're representing both Health Quest and the Northern Dutchess Hospital Administration. We have Denise George, Tim Cleary, Ben DeSanto, and Dave Ping in attendance, myself, and Joe Kirchhoff from Kirchhoff Medical Properties, Bill Fitzpatrick from Fitzpatrick Engineering, Traffic Engineer, Chris Round, who's an AICP planner, Larry Boudreau, who's a landscape architect, both from Chays and Engineering, Carrie May, architect with Steffi and Bradley Architects, and Jennifer Van Thiel, our legal counsel from Cuddy &amp; Fader. So again, this team is here to, again, address any questions you may have. Mr. Chairman, I know you've asked us to be succinct, and we will attempt to do so during this. I do want to, at some level, recognize that there's, um, there are new people in the audience here, so we do have some need to go through a number of the issues that perhaps this board has heard in the past, and I, but I, again, apologize if the board has heard it before, but we think it's important to go through some of these issues. As you know, this is probably the sixth or seventh time we've appeared before your board, the fourth meeting where it was actually a public hearing. We've been working with the board since January of this year, and worked through a lot of issues on the site plan. And again, some people have, I really only just learned about some issues of the project. We want to make sure that, again, we have the correct information out there. Just, again, a refresher. The project really started, as we've been here since January, the project really started in two thousand and four, when the, this board reviewed Phase One of an expansion of the hospital, which included the Rosenthal Pavilion, really an upgrade to the emergency department on the hospital. That was built in two thousand and five, and reviewed Phase Two of the building, which is to be a future medical office building, additional beds, and additional support within the hospital. So, that review, again, in two thousand and four, contemplated build-out of the site, and in fact, on that build-out, this is slightly different orientation, but this red line around here really describes the area which the board reviewed for additional parking on the site at full build-out of the project. And that's really been our guide as we proceeded through this very specific site plan approval and special permit approval for the expansion. In two thousand and four, some of the things that the board did was, really, set standards for lighting, set standards on the architectural tone and type on the building, set standards on the height of the building, again, talking about setting the limits for the parking. So the board did a lot of work in two thousand and four that I know we've all built on since You'll hear a lot tonight, and you've heard me say a number of times, that this plan form really follows function in this design. Both the location, the size, the height of the structure, really is defined by the medical, clinical needs of the patients and visitors to the hospital. And I can't, and I've said it a bunch of times, I can't say it enough. It's clearly what's been the driving impetus here. What I probably haven't said enough is that the exterior of the site, the circulation, the parking, the patient and visitor access to the hospital is equally important from a medical necessity. And again, we've really worked to make it work, both recognizing concerns of the community, the importance of the hospital as an institution to the Village of Reinbeck, and the needs of the specific clinicians working within the hospital. So we think it's important, as a tone, to understand that's where we're coming from. Let me turn it over to the architect then to talk a little more about specifics of the building, and we can, again, we'll go through more site plan and specific environmental issues as we proceed through our presentation.
Good evening. My name is Carrie May. I'm with Steffi and Bradley Architects. As Jeff mentioned, the Phase Two of this project, which was planned back in two thousand and four as part of the Paul Rosenthal addition, was actually planned as part of a Design for Healthcare Facilities guidelines that was established back in nineteen ninety-nine. So, the regulating codes have changed significantly since then. New York State recently adopted the two thousand and ten guidelines for healthcare facilities, skipping over the two thousand and six edition entirely. So we've seen kind of an incremental jump in the requirements for the square footages, the HVAC requirements, daylight requirements, and so on and so forth, and patient care areas. So, the Phase Two plan, which was roughly thirty thousand square feet back in two thousand and four, had to be expanded to roughly eighty-seven thousand square feet to accommodate the new patient bedrooms and the square footages that they require. Now, to take a step backwards, the original Phase Two plan anticipated renovating some of the existing patient rooms in place. The new codes are so stringent that the existing hospital beds can actually not be renovated to bring them up to current standards. The hallways are too small, the patient rooms themselves are too small, they don't have enough access to light, we don't have the mechanical equipment necessary, so that's why all forty of the new patient bedrooms need to go in the new addition. So, as I mentioned before, we've increased the square footage of the footprint itself, but the height of the building has not changed. The originally intended three-story building, which was approved back in two thousand and four, is still the same intent today. As the board is aware, we previously had an application pending before the ZBA for a seven-foot variance. We've more recently submitted an application for a three-foot-six variance, bringing our building height to a measured thirty-eight foot-six. You can see from the graphic that our mechanical structural zones are called out, the white space that you're seeing is the actual patient-occupied space, and the critical adjacencies with the existing hospital are laid out here so that you can see, these were really the designing, driving force behind the design of our building. I'm going to start with the second floor, because this really is the key factor in this building, which is the patient bedrooms. There's forty new patient bedrooms here, and these are the minimum square footage required for single patient rooms, in addition to the natural light requirements, so you'll see that they actually dance around the perimeter of the building, which is why it jogs the way it does. The new addition holds these forty new patient bedrooms, and their adjacencies to the existing second-floor units are critical for patient care, visitor satisfaction, and staff ease of use. So the existing ICU, the maternity beds, the rehab beds, will all stay in the existing hospital on the same level, so it's very important that we connect with minimal or no ramping at this level. We've designed it so that this level is at the exact same elevation as the second-floor existing hospital. You can see from our enlarged section here that the floor-to-floor height for the proposed addition, second floor, is twelve feet, and this is the minimum code required, floor-to-floor, in order to get the patient room ceiling height that were required by code, the mechanical spaces above to serve those, we have stringent HVAC air changes that are required, and then the structure, of course, to support the actual building. Above that, we have the third floor, which is our new operating suite. The operating suite, again, critical adjacencies on the existing third floor. They're in the existing surgical suite, they will remain with endoscopy services and pain management services, so again, adjacencies and support services, including on-call services and doctors' offices to support that unit are necessary. The critical thing about the third floor is that we actually have the largest floor-to-floor height requirement here, sixteen feet, and this is all code-required space, we're not being generous with this. We have a ten-foot requirement inside those operating rooms, ten foot to the underside of the ceiling. Above that, you'll see that there's a very minor zone to accommodate for the sprinklers and lighting. The next zone you're seeing is actually supplementary structural requirements for the booms that operate in the ORs. They're necessary for the medical procedures that are being provided in this hospital. And then this next zone is that mechanical coordination zone. Again, we have really stringent ventilation requirements for all of these ORs. This is the minimum amount of space that's required to meet that. In keeping with the best practices of hospital design, the first floor is going to integrate the public access functions. We have registration, visiting, office functions, and the private patient functions in OR suite really aren't appropriate for this floor. It's not within best practices to provide these kinds of services on the first floor, mostly because we have patients, in a lot of cases, that can't care for themselves or evacuate themselves in the case of an emergency, so if there's something in the event of a natural disaster or flood, we always want them to be at least one story above grade for that purpose. The new design creates a new circulation pattern for the hospital, connecting the existing main entry with the west wing main lobby where the existing cafeteria will remain. This brings the new circulation pattern that actually improves what the existing hospital does, which is to take public through clinical areas such as the radiology department to get to those public zones. The first floor is at a minimum twelve-foot floor-to-floor height. Again, it's just providing the minimum code-required ceiling heights, mechanical spaces to serve those. We've actually taken the entire building on the first floor and sunk it one level, or one foot lower than the existing first-floor level, to minimize the overall height of the building as much as possible. The square footage of the first floor matches what's going on above it, so again, the square footage, the shape of the building, has been dictated by the second floor. We have roughly seven thousand square feet of common space, which includes corridors, public space, security rooms, mechanical and electrical rooms. There's approximately fourteen thousand square feet of nonprofit hospital office space, and at this time, only about five thousand square feet of space is being allocated to leasable medical office space, and this could be reallocated to the hospital at any given time based on their need. Our proposed design incorporates significant design elements to help reduce the scale of the building from a visual impact. We've raised the base of the building with a red brick to a higher level, and we've increased the thickness of the cornice at the top to reduce the perceived scale of the building. And the result is a cohesively designed building which extends the language of the existing architecture, which is already present on campus. The colors and the materials of the proposed addition have been designed to match the existing Paul Rosenthal Pavilion, which was created in two thousand and five. And the street elevation and the adjacent properties, this is a view taken from Route Nine, significantly higher than the grade at the building face. So, what we've done here is increased, obviously, the landscaping, but you can see that we've increased and improved all of the views from the adjacent properties by adding a lot of landscaping and by being sensitive to the views in terms of the building height. The new patient rooms and OR suite are critical to bring Northern Dutchess Hospital up to today's standards for healthcare facilities. The design that we've created here is in context with the historic and vibrant community of Reinbeck, and we're really confident that this proposed addition will be an invaluable asset to this community.
Okay, my name is Larry Boudreau of the Chays &amp; Companies. I'm going to go through the site planning.
If anyone's come late, there are a few seats on the side here. There's a seat there, there might be another seat over there, if you want to sit down.
Okay, thank you again, Larry Boudreau of the Chays &amp; Companies. The site plans, I'm going to go through the sequence, and what's first being shown here is the two thousand and four site plan, which set the limits for the parking area, which is this red line. And this was Phase One, this is Phase Two. What we also show here is a green lawn area that fronts Route Nine. This is that existing brick medical office building with the parking, and we'll get more into detail there. I'm also going to get into a site plan that we submitted in August, keeping in mind, we first submitted in January. So we went through quite a sequence of events, working with the planning board, to get this site plan to the place where we were all comfortable with. And the key thing here to note is that the establishment of that two thousand and four limit, we were within, and in fact, the area preserved, the lawn area in front, is a little bit larger than what was shown in two thousand and four. So, in this layout, what you see, of course, is that within the red line, there's access to the hospital off of Montgomery, that's gone in this plan. You'll see the sidewalks all along Route Nine, as well as going all along Montgomery here. We also solved some of the circulation problems that were here, so again, after eight months, we really came up with a plan that we were very pleased with.
The, I guess, the step that happened after this, this is the plan that the board conducted their initial SECA review on, and established a SECA NIG deck, closed the public hearing, and issued a recommendation for us to go to the ZBA for height variance. But after that, I think, as a lot of people know, there was some concern from the community about this plan, and so, again, taking that to heart, wanting to work with the community, we embarked on a program to modify this plan, to perhaps meet some of the concerns of the neighborhood. Recognizing that the board, again, working with the board, we had developed this plan, we developed a second plan and have offered that to the board for review as an alternate to the plan that the board originally approved and granted the SECA NIG deck on. So Larry can talk a little bit about that revised plan and some of the impacts that were, again, seen with that plan.
All right, so here's the, what we're calling October two thousand and thirteen, and what this shows is the area that was recaptured, the lawn area that was recaptured is shown in the dark green, and the yellow is the additional pavement to what already exists, all right? So you can see that effectively what we're adding to what's already out there is that yellow.
So, you have to go back and forth between the two plans.
You can see that additional lawn area. Okay, so, next one. Okay, so what this chart briefly shows is that in two thousand and four, really, the bottom line is this right here, how much of that lawn area is still left. In our August supplemental, we actually picked up more because we were inside it, and in October, that supplemental, we jumped to one point five-one, so you can see the difference that we're picking up in that lawn area.
So, two thousand and four remaining lawn space is one point one-seven acres. Two thousand and thirteen is one point one-eight acres. The October plan is one point five-one acres. So, the net lawn area converted to green space in the August plan was point six-three acres, in the October plan, point two-six, just a hair over a quarter of an acre, and that's the, again, the current August plan, about a quarter of an acre converted from lawn to parking in this plan.
What this illustrates is the August layout. Again, we wanted to show the existing pavement. If you'd walk out there right now, this is what you would see, and these are the planting areas. And then the proposed pavement, again, August is the light gray, and what this is showing here is some green infrastructure we're using, porous pavement, which allows us to decrease, you know, the area for bio-retention in the lawn area. What this also shows is the existing trees to remain in dark green, and the lighter green is what we're proposing as planting. Sidewalks are still in there. What this also shows here is the beefing up of the landscaping along Montgomery, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. And this is the October supplemental, and if you toggle back and forth, you can see where it picks up right there. You can really see how much, how significant that is, but also is all these trees, so, again, the dark green, existing trees, the lighter green, proposed trees. Okay.
Just to touch on lighting, I...
A little bit, and some of the details in the lighting. The board, again, in two thousand and four, this board was actually very cognizant of lighting in two thousand and four, and really set a performance standard of one-foot candle of lighting across the site, and really, human-scale fixtures. Because it's been raised, I do want to compare this to Stop &amp; Shop, because I've heard that enough, and I just want to provide the comparison. Stop &amp; Shop fixtures are thirty-two feet tall. These fixtures are, sorry, they're, no, the...
These fixtures are fourteen on a concrete base. And as a result, with a lower fixture, you have many more fixtures across. You have to have more fixtures when you have a lower fixture to get the foot candle. Stop &amp; Shop has a four-foot candle average across the site. Again, we are at a one-foot candle average with lighting across the site here, again, really the minimum necessary, we believe, for safety for patients and visitors here. But the comparison that we think is, has been unfair to Stop &amp; Shop lighting. We've worked very hard to keep the lighting in control on this site.
Just, if I could add a few more other things. The lighting, we sought out the same consultant that did it back in oh-four, and so, they came on board, they knew exactly what light was out there, they spec'd the same thing. This is a hundred and fifty watt, a Stop &amp; Shop is four hundred watt, big difference.
And these are LED dark sky certified light fixtures.
They're designed to protect the nighttime visual environment.
Over here, this plan is, the recent supplemental that was submitted in last week, the same as October, all through here. What changed here is there's a maintenance building here, and we captured the twelve spaces here, and we put that building up here, so that function moves, we get parking closer to the hospital. Also, I should have mentioned it in the previous one, but when we're taking out these fifty-plus parking spaces here, because we took them out here and all along here, we had to put them someplace. We put them in the northern part of the campus, so this one's the northwest and the northeast.
Okay. Just to talk for a minute about some of the visual impacts of the site. We've taken viewpoints, taken photos that exist today at various points across the site, and also taken a section through the site to really describe what the visuals are today looking into the Northern Dutchess Hospital site. And then what you'll see are then some photo simulations after the project is complete of what some of the impacts may be. Here is the viewpoint one, which is looking at the existing, what's called the Stone House today on Montgomery. Again, as part of the proposal, the Stone House is removed, and we've been asked to provide a privacy fence and landscaping across the front to really soften the views looking into the site. And just, you know, again, a key down here, if you can see it, but this is looking really from the Baptist Church into the site here. But we have a combination of both high and low landscaping, again, to screen views into the site. Parking is not visible as a result of both the five-foot fence and the landscaping, and you can just see some of the new structure in the post-construction. Again, some of the existing structure does show in the pre-construction, so it's, but the majority of the development is clearly screened by the landscaping. This is a view from the, really, the edge of the historic district, again, the hospital not being in the historic district, and you'll hear more about that later, but this is looking at the intersection of Montgomery and Route Nine. And you'll notice that the main hospital driveway is right here. You can see this fire hydrant, kind of as a marker, so you can understand where you are on the site. So there's a driveway here, and there's a second driveway just past this telephone pole right here. So, again, significant pavement, and really, you have a kind of a straight shot view into the existing structure with this pavement on site. As part of the redevelopment, that goes away, and what we've done then is provide, again, a combination of evergreens, deciduous trees, and shrubs across the area of the site here, to really screen those views into the site, and really intercept those views with this landscaping. And then the third visual simulation, this is taken at the existing hospital driveway with its intersection on Route Nine. And, again, the Rosenthal Pavilion, existing right here, existing conditions, we provided, again, a mix of deciduous nevergreen trees, and then shrub plantings at a lower level to screen the parking, and you can see some of the structure here, but again, the parking majority of the site has really been intercepted by the plantings here. But what's equally important, not just as a screening, but as a preservation of the lawn area in front of the house, we think it's important, you've thought it's important, and we've worked hard to create that. And then the third is from, this is the hospital at the northwest corner, this is one oh-nine Montgomery Street, and this is the area that Larry referred to, where the maintenance shed is proposed to be relocated, and we'll have some parking adjacent to it. This sits at a much lower elevation than either Montgomery Street, which is here, or any of the neighboring houses, and so, a line of sight, proposed plantings in here, and this lower elevation really shows that this is all screened from view from the neighbors, from Montgomery Street, and from any of the houses in the region there. So again, we've worked hard... So again, we've worked hard to screen those views. So let me turn it over to Chris then.
Chris Round from the Chazen Companies. And we were asked just to look a little closer at the potential impacts on neighborhood, community character, and historic resources, if any. And I have the easy part because all the details have come out already. We've talked about the project, its potential impacts off-site. The areas of concern we want to highlight, so again, this is Montgomery Street, and this is 9. This is that intersection. You saw that panoramic view from viewpoint two, viewpoint three, just north of the historic district. And then viewpoint one, looking into the site, you know, directly at the area of the planned construction. The Maples, which is a National Register site, which is currently occupied as a professional office, that's the other resource of concern. We're looking at those potential visual impacts. When we talk about impacts on historic resources, we're looking at, if you're very familiar with that, you have a, the historic district was just south of us. Generally, you're looking at physical impacts, impacts on the structures themselves, but you're also looking at the indirect impacts, impacts from increased activity. You're also looking at impacts from uses that might be incongruent with the character of the community. And you heard in great detail the attention to details with respect to architecture. So it's important to note, the hospital is not within the district, not regulated by those criteria. If you look at the nomination criteria for the village's historic district, it spoke to the vibrant mix of uses, the diversity of architecture, this cohesiveness that exists within the village. It recognized that this was the upper limits of that historic area, and that there is this transition as you move north outside of the village, as you move north out of 9. And when we look at community character and what makes great communities, you're looking at that vibrant mix of uses. But it's also looking at the institutional uses that contribute to what makes a community operate and how it might be successful. An institutional use like the hospital, which has been here since the 1920s, really helps the community operate. It's a very nice transition from this mixed-use district to the south to the more commercial uses to the north. So we note that. Jeff provided you with the views and sections from the Maples into the site, and we've made site modifications to that. We note that the changes in grade from the Maples to Montgomery Street residents, the 109 Montgomery, really mitigates any impacts there. We also noted that the viewpoints, as if we move forward from, there's that site. So this is looking, not just at the Stone House, but it's looking from opposite, from that historic National Register site. This, just at the northern limits of the historic district, looking into the site. So you can see that the landscaping, the architecture, the locational elements, the movement of parking away from Route 9, has mitigated any potential off-site impacts from a visual standpoint. We also note that part of the nominating criteria for the historic district recognize that this is a walkable community, that it has, it's walkable in scale, it has those amenities. And so the site plan, and we noted previously, does add those type of amenities, so mirroring what's going, the positive things that are going on within the village and trying to carry those features to the north. And you saw, and I'll point back, I think Larry keyed in on it earlier, is that we're eliminating some of that hard surfacing there. So we're really softening the landscape, and as if you're looking from the south, you're seeing a much more natural environment and much more enhanced landscaping. And Jeff pointed out the details with respect to the lawn and the preservation of the lawn and the minimal impacts there. The architecture here, this is the existing facility. You're not able, because of the landscape screening, to see the principal structure that's being constructed here. So another positive attribute. That's my piece. I think we're going to talk to traffic just a little bit?
Sorry, I want to talk, right.
I'm going to talk trees for just a second, tree removal. Again, this has been an issue, and so I just want to address tree removal, because I know it's been some concern in the community. Where are all those trees that are either being removed? This is an exhibit from the Arborist Report, which we hired to examine the trees on the site. And we did some highlighting here, again, to kind of show three zones of trees. And this purple area here, this is underneath the building footprint. And again, the building is the same in both the October and the August submissions. So there are 15 trees being removed underneath the building footprint itself. And we've spent, I think, a lot of time explaining why the building really needed to be where it is to match into the existing hospital infrastructure. This blue section here, again, this is the really office building. Sorry, I didn't orient you, but this is Montgomery, and this is 9. But this is the existing office building here. These trees in here are being removed as a result of new circulation here. Not really, this isn't really the lawn area, but this is, again, north of the building. And there are, again, 22 trees in this section which are proposed for removal. So then we get, really...
Can the screen be raised somehow? Can he put his hands in the way?
You got my head out of the way, sorry. Better?
The screen is still too low.
Right.
There's that open seat around.
There's, right, several open seats, I think, around, and more available. The trees up front, and those who've reviewed the Arborist Report, there are trees which are to be removed as part of the expansion. There are trees which have been identified for protection, and there are some dead trees which just need to be removed. But south of the hospital, there were 11 trees proposed for removal as part of the October plan. So again, in this zone, 11. The October plan had an additional 10 trees, I'm sorry, the August plan had additional 10 trees proposed for removal. But again, the most recent plan has a total of 11 for removal in that area. In the rear of the site, the northeast and northwest corners, and this is the northwest corner behind 109 Montgomery Street, where we've created a valley parking lot and now moved the maintenance shed, there are 17, I'm sorry, 13 trees proposed for removal back in this corner. That was, sorry, wrong button. 13 trees proposed for removal in this corner. Again, that's a result of moving those cars from the front to the rear of the hospital. And in this section, in the northeast part of the site, there are 17 trees proposed for removal in this corner. So again, where the trees are, I just wanted to make sure there's some clarity on that. The August plan had proposed 78 new plantings, 229 shrubs. The new plan has 107 trees, a mix of deciduous and evergreens, and some 266 shrubs. We have heard comments from the Tree Commission, I know we'll hear more, that perhaps we've been too aggressive with the tree planting, but we'll absolutely work with the board on those issues. Let me then turn it over to Mr. Fitzpatrick then to talk about traffic impacts, to address some of the questions that we've heard.
I'm Bill Fitzpatrick, Fitzpatrick Engineering. My firm concentrates on operational analysis, accident reconstruction, safety evaluations, expert testimony, and accident reconstruction. The traffic study that was done for this project was done by the Chazen Companies. In my career, I spent 35 years with the Department of Transportation, New York State Department of Transportation, and then I, when I retired as Director of Traffic Engineering and Safety, I then went to work for the Chazen Companies for three years. Why was I brought in on this project? Because of my background with the New York State DOT. The focus of the traffic impact on, potentially on this project, or created by this project, is the intersection of Route 9 and Montgomery Street. So I was brought in to kind of bring in a perspective of an ex-DOT Director of Traffic Engineering and Safety to take a look and see what the Chazen Companies had collected as far as data and what conclusions they had determined. And essentially, I'm in agreement with the details of their report, which have been provided to the board. I'm not going to go into detail on that because, number one, it's boring, and number two, I think we've used our 15 minutes. But I will say this, that when a traffic engineer looks at an intersection, they're looking at two things: efficiency, we call it level of service, which is basically the comfort level of a motorist in maneuvering through that intersection, and ultimately the safety of the intersection. And when the Chazen Companies looked at these aspects of the operation of this intersection, they found two things. And you all live here, you know how that intersection operates. It's a busy intersection. But the reason that it can operate fairly efficiently with a good level of service, essentially, is because the right turns dominate the movements out of Montgomery Street. 80% of the movements egressing from Montgomery Street are right turns. And that simply is the reason this works. There are two lanes. People line up to make the left and the right. Now, the level of service existing and with the build conditions of this project, and it's a conservative analysis, we're talking about maximum occupancy of the proposed facilities, the level of service does not change. Each movement, whether it's the northbound left from Route 9 into Montgomery Street, that level of service stays the same. The level of service for the right turn stays the same, and the level of service for the left turns out stay the same. Now, the left turnout is not made easily. We all know that. So the next thing we look at is the safety record. The Chazen Companies had produced a three-year accident history provided by the New York State Department of Transportation, and it went up through 2011. So last week, I took a trip to DOT's offices, and I reviewed their database on their computers, and I updated that information. And essentially, it was an overlap, I did the most recent three years, and the overlap showed that we have virtually no accident history at this location. We have a couple of rear ends on Montgomery Street, which is normal. We have a couple of animal accidents, and we have one left turn from Route 9. So the accident history is clean, has stayed clean for five years. The level of service is fine. Now, I concede, and the Chazen Company did agree, that if you're making a left turn during peak hours, be prepared to wait for a while. And that's true on any of your intersections on Route 9 in Reinbeck. There was some concern about whether this intersection needed to be upgraded relative to the traffic control, and I'm here to tell you that in the eyes of, I believe, the state of New York, and I'm not speaking, please understand, I am not an employee of the state any longer. I do not speak for them, but I understand how they think. I was them for a long time. So there is no reason to upgrade this to a higher control. And in fact, it would be detrimental. There would be longer queues, and there would be rear end accidents on Route 9. That is associated with a signal being placed that is not necessary. So in conclusion, the Chazen data is correct. They did a professional job, and there will be no significant impact at all to this key intersection. The details are contained within the report. Thank you.
I'm going to wrap up just very briefly. We know that people here want to speak tonight. Certainly, it would be impossible for us to summarize in a presentation all of the documentation that's in the written materials that we've submitted, and of course, we refer to those, including the response to the Village Engineers comment letter, which we've submitted this evening. I submit that this project is the perfect illustration of long-term planning. The project first became before you in 2004. You were very tough. You raised questions about lighting. You told the hospital that you wanted to insist on one foot candle average. Parking was discussed for the addition, as well as the Rosenthal Pavilion, and parking limits were set beyond which you told the hospital not to proceed. When the hospital came back in January of this year, all those limits were honored. The standards that applied to issuing a special permit have not changed since 2004. All of the parameters have been met. But I think the comments that have been made to date show all of us that the process works. You've been just as tough in 2013 as you were in 2004. Nonetheless, comment from the public has pointed out a matter in which even more of the front area of the hospital can be preserved. The hospital is part of the community, has been part of the community, and will continue to be a very important part of the community and wants to work with Reinbeck. We believe that this project qualifies for issuance of permits in 2013, just as the village determined it did in 2004. And I would just call your attention to one of the factors, the special permit factors, is a goal of the village of creating a healthy mix of uses that enhances the commercial viability of the village of Reinbeck. This project does not only that, but serves a deep community need. And we thank you for your time.
What we'd like to do now is have the report from the Chairman of the Village Tree Commission, Cicely Frazier, who made a site visit with the hospital last week. And Cicely's done some research and submitted a report to us, and we'd like to hear from the Tree Commission. Thank you, Cicely.
So I'd like to thank the board for inviting us to review this important project, and thank members of the Tree Commission, which, besides myself, are Meg Crawford, Brian Del Pizzo, Judy Merritt, and John Wexler, and Howie Trout, who serves as the liaison with the Village Board with us. So we took a look at the hospital application, and we took a tour last week. And this is a summary of the recommendations that we have made to the board. Their recommendations are much more detailed, but this is a good summary, I think. So we looked at the visual sweep of the lawn and the trees which grace the current hospital, and it's clear you're entering the village. We agree with the findings of the applicant's arborists, that there are no heritage trees on the property, or any that hold local importance, or are rare, or particularly significant. There are a few large trees, there are many small trees. Indeed, there are a lot of nice, very young trees that I put in myself, so I know they're But none of these trees are important as an individual tree. What is important about this property is the number of the trees, the combination of the trees, the lawn in which they sit, in which they are set off and made more beautiful. When people drive around the curve and come down from the village, come down into the village from the north, they naturally slow down. I think that curve helps for them to recognize that they're entering the village. This is an introduction to the village, and it's a very important one. The lawn and the clustering of the trees softens the view. As you pass the commercial areas to the north, the view changes. And this is a transition that we need and needs to remain. It's an entrance which welcomes people to Reinbeck, and we, as well as many other people, want to maintain this welcoming mixture of trees and lawn, and keep that sense of entrance and of welcome. So as we looked at the landscaping plan for the Northern Duchess Hospital Campus Improvement Plan, Phase 2, our first thought is that we very much appreciate this new plan's attempt to maintain that sense of introduction, of transition, and of welcome. It tries to preserve the lawn and the line of trees along Route 9. It tries to preserve the lawn and the line of trees along Route 9, and we're happy, very happy with that idea. However, we feel pretty strongly that the number of plantings was really too much, and we need to reduce that to better suit the amount of land available, particularly in that strip that you saw in the pictures, that is south of the, of the new addition and of the new parking lot. So, sometimes less is more, and we feel that in this case. Due to the limited scope of the tree inventory that was made, it was a little bit difficult to figure out exactly how many trees will remain, because some of the newest trees were not counted on the outside edges. But in the space near Route 9, the plan shows 26 existing trees to remain where they are, and 39 trees to be added. That's 65 trees in that very relatively small space that's right in front of the hospital. Most of those trees are small and young, and they'll grow and absolutely overflow that space. Not only will there be an excess of trees, but there, a lot of the lawn will disappear under those trees. So, we appreciate the intent, but we feel it needs to be scaled down a little bit. There are special, several tree-friendly parts to the plan. One is the use of pervious paving, which will help to drain the water and prevent icing, cutting down the need for salt, which is very damaging to trees. But we also would, we would like to see more pervious paving and perhaps porous asphalt. Any way that you can help the water to drain into the ground is good for plants, and so we would look forward to considering that, if possible. We also like the use of native plants, which tend to be hardier, healthier, better able to cope with issues as they grow, but we felt they weren't used as appropriately as they might have been in the plan, and we made some recommendations, more specific recommendations to the Planning Board about that. We would like to see a greater number of plant-filled parking islands, parking lot islands, and different planting materials used there, because a parking lot is a tremendously difficult location for a tree to grow in. It's very harsh. The walkway in the northeast quadrant near Route 9 looks very nice, and includes large pots and benches, and it would allow patients to walk around outside or be wheeled around, and that is a lovely idea. But again, we feel it's overplanted, and there's not enough space for the adult-sized trees as they grow. Nonetheless, we appreciated the effort to make this an attractive outdoor space, and the plantings provide a very good attempt to keep the welcoming intent of the trees and lawns. They need to be thinned down, and the things that we would consider are suitability for locations, size, seasonal interest, so that you get three, possibly four, seasons of beauty from a particular plant, the ability to dwell in tough environments like the parking lot, and shade and definition for the parking lot. So, we would also like to see a greater choice of species, particularly more evergreens, because they're more year-round effective screens than deciduous trees. When we consider the change in climate, we've seen already, as we plant our trees, that northern species are not doing as well, and the maples in Reinbeck are failing precipitously, really. And so, I would encourage some more southern choices in the plant list, because in, you know, you're looking forward to this going into 40 and 50 years into the future, we're gonna need those kind of trees here. And we did mention that more specifically in our, in our letter to the Planning Board. Screening along Montgomery Street, we thought needs to be beefed up a little bit, and maybe moving some of the shrubs, some of the 260 shrubs from the front of the hospital around to the side would be helpful. There was a concentration of particularly London plane trees, and we just, we're terribly afraid of a concentration of the same species, so that any bug or disease can wipe out, you know, half your trees if that's what you've planted. So, we want to have a variety, a pretty vigorous mix. And we'd also like to see certain trees that we can't plant, because we only plant bare root, because we use volunteers to plant, we need light trees of a limited number of species, but the hospital would be able to put in all kinds of wonderful trees, that we would, we would encourage them to do that. They did include perennials in their landscape design, but we were curious, and it's just a question really, whether they would be able to see, receive the care from, from the hospital staff that they, they would need, because they tend to be labor-intensive. So, they might consider daffodils and other bulbs, which tend to be tough as, as iron, and perhaps grasses instead of perennials. And then we need to remember that, long after the building is done, these trees are going to need care, certainly before, during, but many, probably five to 10 years into the future, they're going to need babying, and they need to be looked at very regularly by a certified arborist, and to receive fertilization and other kinds of care. We also would like you to adopt the, the arborist's plan in, in his booklet that he made up about how to, how to protect the trees from the planting, from the building machines and soil compaction. So, thank you very much, and we look forward to talking to you in the future, if you have any questions.
Well, thank you very much. The Village Board appreciates the effort of the Tree Commission on this. Okay, so, we're going to open up to the public comments. I have a list here of names. The first name on the list is Keith Greenley.
Greeney.
Greeney?
Greeney.
Greeney, okay.
Greeney.
Got it.
I live at, at the edge of the village, just down from the hospital, and I really appreciate the presentation the hospital has given here, because it's really informative. And it's even convinced me more, and when I first spoke to the Board here back in August, when they had the beginning stages of open mic, I made the comment that I felt that the, this was a self-serving proposal on the part of the Health Quest, and also by the builder. And I still feel that today. I feel it's very self-serving. I don't feel that the village has been taken into account with any of this stuff. I don't think that this is a proposal that's come from the village. Reinbeck happens to be a very small community, and I think that, that when it comes down to our, our overall plan for the communities, it goes against everything about it. Now, I didn't spend thousands of dollars, but I did take some time, and about $20 here, to present my, my look at this, and I hope you can see this. I hope you can see this, because basically, this is called the wetlands, and this is available on the computer. And actually, I could, I was even able to do a nice little paste-up of the existing hospital. This is Route 9, this is Astor Drive, this is Montgomery Street, and I live right here, in the flood zone. And by the way, this area right here is under an aqua fur, and when you dig down about three to four feet, you're into village water. And if you look here, this little outline here is the nursing home, the Thompson House. And that's been there since, I think, the late 80s, early 90s, which I thought was a good idea at the time, when that went in, because there was older people and so on. But I had no idea that they planned on taking this 17 acres and turning it into complete blacktop. And when they say 1.5 acres, we're talking about, we have 16 acres of hardtop on this land. And we have a wet zone right down here, D E C wetlands here, that runs down towards Hogs Bridge, which by the way, had to be replaced because of washout, continual washout. And this, after that bridge was built, has been flooded twice extremely. And they dump their water, it has no other place to go than down in this area. Both, many of these places couldn't be built today, if along Montgomery Street, because of the wetlands. But somehow or another, I don't know how they do this, and I haven't seen these permits yet, but they run more and more water down in this area, and I find it very upsetting. Now, I just want to be sure here. Oh, yes. By the way, this is so saturated, this land, that they, we have a 45-acre lot up here on Route 9, that would make the perfect location for the beginning stages of a new hospital. If that 45 acres up here is not enough, and that's right up just south of Citizens Bank, north of the fairgrounds. Across the street from that, there's over 600 acres of raw land available, that I'm sure could be used. And I think rather than plugging this huge building here that they're saying is good for Reinbeck, I don't know that, but... Now, when I flip this over, this is some of the same stuff that you've seen already, but I've added a couple of features to it. And this here is the nursing home. This here is where the water drains, and these little orange lines right here, it comes down here, and this is pretty much it back in 19, I think, 95, 94 in time, and that's where the water's drained. The rest of it, there was really no drainage on that property. It all went downhill, it all ends up here. This, I want to be sure I didn't miss a sheet, and I did.
Mr. Greenley, 21 people have signed up to speak.
What's that again?
21 people have signed up to speak, so...
I know, I'm speaking, I have my wife, too.
Okay.
So, this is the wetlands, this is the pad they're putting in here, right here. This pad here is the new parking area, they got a trench here to bring all this water down through and dump it into here. This is like a lake down in here. And the drop-offage from this point to this point is a 15-foot drop. If you go to the, the house up here, which is the old Kramer Farmhouse, that drops 28 feet from that point down to here. So, you've got a rushing area of water. Lastly, by the way, this is the other proposal, that knocks out that driveway that takes you down to the Thompson House. This is where the water's draining right now. This is the new addition here, and this has added drainage all through here. This is the old pipeline that you saw before. These all converge and go back into that down area. As a person who lives down near Hogs Bridge, I'm against this project because of the water. As a community person, I think this is outrageous. I think the size of this operation is out of control. I like the hospital, it's served me well. I've been here since 1968, and it's served me well. My two sons were born, my grandson is born here. So, I don't have any complaints. But by the way, another complaint I had was that they lacked leadership, because they only had temporary people who were managing the operation here. And now, they've hired a new person from Chicago, a 70-year-old man who's coming up here to manage Reinbeck's facility. This guy is known as an empire builder, merger, he's a big merger. I can see right now Mount Kisco and the other operations merging. I can also see, in his writings, in his retirement, he fired 300 people to clean house, and he's good at that, too. So, he'll be here, he's probably here someplace right now, doing, but he'll be here, I think, effective January 1st. Thank you very much.
The next name on the list, and it's hard to read some of the signatures, Muriel Carrigan?
Carriganis.
Carriganis, okay. We can't hear you.
My name is Muriel Carriganis. I've been a volunteer at Northern Duchess Hospital for over 20 years. I work in the admitting department, and the complaint I get is parking. We need all the parking we can get, because a lot of them come in, and they have to go around, they cannot find a parking spot. So, the most, all I'm begging is, please, more parking. Thank you.
Peggy Howe is the next name. Yes, there's a sign-in sheet, or there was a sign-in sheet. Do you have another page, Karen, or do we have another page up there?
Can you hear me?
We can start another list, I'll put one up at the front desk.
I'm Peggy Howe, and I live directly across the street from the hospital. Before I say another word, I'd like to say that about 99% of the people in the village of Reinbeck, the town of Reinbeck, my neighbors and I, really want the hospital to be the best that it can be. I have a very soft spot in my heart for the hospital. All five of my children were born there, that's quite an accomplishment. I've had various and sundry surgeries and procedures there. In 1999, Northern Duchess Hospital saved my life. Dr. Sabia's emergency room, and Dr. White's in particular, with very studied diagnosis and quick treatment, truly saved my life. Now, granted, they did send me to New York, because they weren't in a position to handle my problem, but they sent me. I shall forever be grateful to them. Northern Duchess has attracted many people to come here and live. It's a big employer. They take care of our health needs, and they, they truly bring people to this wonderful, beautiful village. While we're talking about beautiful villages, let's give credit where credit is due. Sally Mazarella, Kay Verilli, Jane Gallo, Dory McKibben, many years ago, not recently, spent hundreds of hours to bring zoning to this village, which had none. Can you guess what we'd look like if they had not done their work? Not only did they do their work, but they saw to it that that zoning was upheld once it was in place. We owe them a tremendous vote of gratitude. However, I do have my opinions. Parking is one of them, and I think, I think, I think people have, have said a lot about parking tonight, some of it I knew, some of it I learned about for the first time. I'm just going to toss out something. I don't think parking is something that you can think of piecemeal, and I wonder if anyone has given any thought to what's going to happen in 10 years, because you know perfectly well, there will be another addition. And where will they put it? On the parking lot. Where will the parking go? On the existing green land. Think about it. When it comes to the lighting, I don't know much about that either, but I think, is it possible to use lower lights for the pathways, and fewer of the high ones? That's not going to impede people' progress to wherever they're going, but it might certainly help the neighborhood. help the neighborhood. Now, when it comes to the traffic, I'd like to invite the entire Chazen group to sit on my porch and watch what happens. Especially in the winter, as people try to stop to turn left, they slide up on my lawn, there's going to be a serious accident one day. The screeching of brakes is quite melodic. I don't think a light is the answer either, and maybe it's simply a problem that we do have anyway, but I think it needs to be thought over, well, I'm sure it's been thought over, but nobody ever seems to come up with an answer. When I first moved here, there was no Stop &amp; Shop, there was no Williams Lumber there. Williams Lumber was downtown. Um, "I'm Quite Old," you say, this goes way back, and I think we didn't begin to have the traffic. We just didn't begin to. When I first moved here, there was no bridge to Kingston, so there wasn't the traffic on Upper Montgomery Street or Mount Rutson Road. So it's very, very changed, and with it has come the same traffic pattern. I don't know the answer. I'm sure it's been looked at, but it concerns me, and it concerns all my neighbors as well. Now, I don't think I have anything more to say.
Thank you. Next person on the list is Dorothy Crane.
A little intimidating. Uh, I'm Dorothy Crane, I've lived here in Reinbeck for over 40 years. The first thing I want to say is that everybody in this room, I think, is deeply connected to the hospital, as is my family. My father-in-law was treated and died there. Our gram was trea, was lived, was well cared for in Thompson House. She spent her last days there. My husband's eye was stitched up there. My son's smashed hand was treated there. For 30 years, I worked at Bard and was in that emergency room for everything from horrific accidents to drug overdoses to psychotic breaks. The staff was amazing and competent and warm, and I was unfortunately there when the daughter of a good friend of mine died. The hospital is a really intimate part of all of our lives, all of us who live in this area. Nobody, I don't think, in this room wants it to leave, or wants it to be deprived of growth and the excellent care that it can give. And it's giving care not only to us, but to people from Kingston as well. We are all behind the hospital, and I am really impressed with, with how they're upgrading and excited about the things that they're bringing in. We have different opinions, however. Health care has changed, Mike Mazzarella is no longer hot, part of the hospital, he shepherded it in, he grew up here, I don't know if he grew up here, but his family grew up here, he knew Reinbeck inside and out. Northern Duchess is now run by HealthQuest, a five-county medical corporation, who has to, has to look at their bottom line. And the character of Reinbeck's village, I'm not sure really fought, really is a part of that unless we insist on it. So with growth, with all these programs, with all these services which we need, comes the need for parking, so... Always wanted to be a rock and roll singer, maybe this is my big chance. So this diagram here from the site plans, again, is everybody oriented, this is, um, it's hard for me, this is the main, the main entrance of the hospital, this is the hospital lawn in question, this is the Varelli Building. The green here is lawn, currently lawn, that will be lost to new parking. It's not insignificant. I know the numbers seem small, but when you think of the canopy and the green space, it's not insignificant. With the parking comes, comes lighting, lighting, this is, okay? This is the same lighting, um, diagram that you were shown, but perhaps a little more dramatically. These are the streetlights that currently light the road, they do not light the, the hospital except in front of Varelli's building where they throw light. Major lighting at this intersection, but this is a lot of lighting. It may be only an average of one foot candle, but it's over a tremendous difference. It will make, it will make a difference in how our village looks. I think that this is a mistake and that it's not even necessary at this time. I've done a lot of cruising through the parking lot many times a day over the past few weeks, and what I've discovered is that there are, here, you can take this down, that while parking is tight invariably in these lots, next to the ER, behind the healthy aging, by the birthing center, and in front of the Thompson house, that during peak hours, it's hard to find places there. There are always places behind the health annex and the, the parking lots on the other side. And when I counted these, these spaces, there were, there were over 40 spaces available on the campus at peak hours, and I excluded any empty space that was marked for physician, handicap, thrift shopping, clergy, and also excluded the spaces around the Varelli Building, of which there were always spaces. In addition, at peak hours, there were always about 50 spaces available in the leased church lot across the street. Parking analysts, hospital parking analysts, in their work talk about the competition of staff parking, um, and visitor and patient parking. Estimates are that 75% of the parking in a hospital lot is used by staff. So I, I think it's important that we realize that this is just, that, that parking on the lawn here is short-sighted and won't solve the problem. Other hospitals in our area have, have addressed this by having permitted lots, off-site lots for employees. No employee's going to park far away unless we encourage them to. I know I worked at Bard, I had to do it, it's not fun, but it is important, it really is important, that our patients and their visitors can get to the front door without hiking all the way across the campus, but we have to set that up. Other hospitals have built parking garages. So I would like the HealthQuest to consider planning more long range and coming up with something that's not going to be outmoded in just five years to seven years, and to not set up a situation in which we have something that's a gem, that can, should be conserved. I believe that this area should be put under conservancy and not developed at all, because the rest of the hospital will have to develop in order to stay up to code, in order to stay up to date with the latest medical procedures, and we actually want, I want that to happen, and I believe that everybody else does here, does too, but I also want the special character of the village to be preserved. And I don't want parking lots to become placeholders for future buildings, which is what often happens under the pressure of development. So I ask that we consider these, these other alternatives, working together, preserve this area so that the hospital can grow in other areas, perhaps use the buildings across the street, which are already zoned medical, find creative ways to have this amazing hospital, which is increasingly being used by people from Poughkeepsie, by people from Kingston for elective surgery, and keep the, the, the character of the village. Thank you.
We have, we have 20 people left to speak, so please try to adhere to the three-minute timeout. Uh, the next name on the list is Pam Leeming.
Hello, my name is Pam Leeming. I'm a member of the Steering Committee for Save Reinbeck Greenspace, as is Dorothy and her husband Dodd, Kate Long, and my husband David Leeming. I'd first like to address, I see buttons out there, I support Northern Duchess Hospital. So do I. And I'd like to say that there is a member of our community who's been spreading a rumor that people on the Steering Committee come from the city, and that we get all our medical care in the city. This simply isn't true. Speaking personally, I've lived in many places all around the world because of my family, because of my husband's work, and because of my work. And I moved here because I have a daughter and a granddaughter who was born at Northern Duchess, who live nearby. And as for my medical care, I'm in my 60s, and I have lots of doctors now, six of them. Three of them are HealthQuest doctors. My gynecologist, the wonderful Dr. Nathan, my breast specialist, the wonderful Dr. Zaninski, and wonderful, wonderful Dr. Wing, who removed my gallbladder right at Northern Duchess Hospital two months ago. I do not go to the city for my medical care. I am ve, and the other three doctors are local. I am very grateful that we have such wonderful medical care in this area. Another thing I'd like to address is that HealthQuest, in its printed ad, in The Observer, and in other places, on the poster that's in the lobby of the hospital, has tried to portray our Steering Committee and the supporters of Reinbeck Greenspace as being misinformed. We're the fiction people. The only reason that we might have been misinformed, and we might have made some mistakes technically, is because the information was not forthcoming. And in three private meetings with David Ping, Joe Kirchhoff, and Jeff Kane, we were never corrected, fourth, information was not forthcoming, and so it's not surprising that we might have made a few mistakes. And I would like, my topic tonight is parking, and in order to prepare for the meeting, I asked to get the latest parking analysis, which was delivered to me, dated October 8th, 213. Guess what? This is full of data that was collected in 2011, and it has misleading numbers in it. But this is what I had to work with, so I'm going to try to do my best based on old data and misleading numbers. So, let's go. Uh, this parking analysis was prepared by Kirchhoff Properties. It touches on three things: existing parking capacity, necessary changes in existing parking to accommodate the close to 90,000-square-foot addition, and it includes new parking demands related to the additional hospital and medical office space. Dorothy has showed you this map, but I want to outline it again so you have it in your minds very clearly. I'm, um, no, it's okay, I think we can do it here. I'm going to concentrate mainly on public parking lot H and public parking lot F. Now, the hospital, or HealthQuest, has conceded some of the lawn. The original parking that they presented was going to come here and here. They've drawn back to here, but I want you to note something. This is quite a sizable chunk of land. It's very central. It's where the lawn dips down in that beautiful dip. There aren't a lot of trees, so it's very visible, and it is contiguous with this parking that has now been expanded. So what was light gray, very cleverly light gray in your map, which was hard to see, I'd like to outline for everybody. What they propose is this. That is all one contiguous 157-space parking lot. Okay. Now...
Look, we have 18 more people that would like to speak.
I know that, but HealthQuest, I'm sorry, I will, I'm going to finish, it's important. Parking's been mentioned many times, and it's integral to what's going on. In the 2011 data that was collected, this report states that public staff and handicap parking on the campus was either underutilized or adequate on all the observed days and times. There was high staff usage on the campus despite a designated staff parking lot leased from the Baptist Church. Of the 543 available on-campus spaces, and I'm going to give you all a copy of this because it's complicated, an average of 365 spaces were in daily use during peak hours, leaving 169 underutilized or mostly empty spaces. The parking count did not include 100 parking spaces for staff across Montgomery Street in the Baptist church lot, which is now under a seven-year contract, not the month-by-month lease that was reported in the official parking analysis. So including the church lot in the numbers, the total number of available spaces is 643, with 219 of them underutilized. Now, we've heard in 2004, HealthQuest came to the board to get approval for Phase 1 and Phase 2. We know in Phase 1, the ER was expanded. In Phase 2, they got approval for updating patient rooms and the operating rooms in addition was going to be added to the hospital. Uh, can I have a glass of water somehow? My mouth is dry.
You know, you're not being fair to your neighbors. We have 18 people that would like to speak.
Okay, they will.
It's going to be a long night.
No, they will. In 200, in 2013, the amended site plan asked for permission to add approximately 90,000 square feet. Phase 3, HealthQuest has not revealed what it plans to do with the space vacated by the outdated patient rooms and the ORs. Now, what about new parking demand? The new addition is going to displace 50 spaces. So I put it here, replace parking displacement by the addition, 50 spaces. The report also says, and this is where the numbers are inaccurate, it says that in order to provide parking for the new pa, new patient rooms and new operating theaters, there need to be 142 extra spaces. Now, I want to point out that that's a fallacy. These, right here, these patient rooms and these operating theaters already exist. There's nothing new about them. They're going to be moved from here to here. They're not new. There's not going to be any gain in the number of patient rooms or operating theaters. There's gonna...
Medical office.
I'm going to, I'm going to get to it. Well, I'm going to get to it. I'm going to get to it. And so there is still going to be 40 rooms and six operating theaters. They're going to be in a larger space, but they don't need new parking because it already exists. So we're going to put a zero there. The 25,000-square-feet of medical office space. According to a industry formula, you have to provide five parking spaces--
I'm going to have to ask you to sum up because you're not being fair to your neighbors.
All right.
The village has an engineer who's going to review all of these plans and decide about--
All right, I will sum up.
Parking and--
I will sum up. So, the demand is for 176 spaces, although it's only going to be 5,000-square-feet of medical office space. New parking. By taking down the stone house, they're going to add 48 spaces. By filling this in, they were going to add 73 spaces. By pushing into the lawn, we contend that this is not needed. It can be moved elsewhere, and all the little shaved areas of lawn can be saved. So we can take out the 12 handicap spaces and 16 more spaces. So we really get 45 spaces that could be added for 93 spaces. We have 169 unutilized spaces. We have, on the campus, 50 in the parking lot across the street. For a total of 219, add the 93, we have 312 parking spaces that can be used. No need to add this parking to the lawn. Now--
Look, you have--
(APPLAUSE).
You have to sum up. You're not being fair to your neighbors.
Short-term and long-term. Short-- HealthQuest talked for 45 minutes. The hospital can manage this parking, because it is confusing. They could-- Okay.
You know, you-- I'm sorry. You have to stop. You can submit written comments to the board. You could submit your written comments to the hospital to look at as they plan the parking lot. But you have to sum up and stop--
Okay, all right.
Because you're not being-- people are leaving--
All right.
The hour is growing late.
I will stop. I would just like to reiterate that a parking garage would be a long-term solution to the parking problems. Thank you.[765.43][765.43](APPLAUSE).
The next person is David Leeming.[772.23][772.23](APPLAUSE).
Don't worry. I too am a supporter of the hospital and of the hospital's improvements, and I use the hospital and the HealthQuest doctor. I'm going to just center in on one little aspect of the parking. This. This takes up a huge area of the green space. The primary concern of the Steering Committee of the Save Rhinebeck Green Space is preserving the green space. That's our primary concern. If you look at this, you'll see that this large area, for example, holds 12 parking spaces. We're talking about a parking number in the 500s. Is it really worth the village is giving up a large area of its green space in order to provide, for example, these 12 spaces? I don't think so. I think that the handicap parking that's here could be more efficiently placed in other areas even closer to the hospital itself. I'll leave it at that.[872.63][872.63](APPLAUSE).
We have Mary Ann Callahan is the next speaker.
I'm Mary Ann Callahan, and I live on Locust Grove, and I only have a question. Why did not a seeker have to be done for this extension? If you did one years ago, things have changed. That's my only question.
This seeker-- seeker was done. The village engineer has looked at the seeker process and found that the seeker determination was okay. Even the October modifications that were just made still meets the seeker criteria.
From all the time back?
Yes.
Okay. Got some questions.
And, you know, the village engineer has looked at the drainage, has looked at all the issues, and has talked about the previous pavement, and will all be incorporated in the plan, you know, should this plan move forward. We have a-- we have an engineer who studies these kinds of things and makes sure that the water will be contained on the property and not add to the situation, unless the planning board would not move forward with it. The next person is Mary Saunders-- Sanders?
Sanders. Hi. I'll be brief. I didn't bring my husband to get double the time.[961.13][961.13](LAUGHTER). I live next to the hospital also, on Route 9. Briefly, we're retired military. We do not have family in the area. We researched, we decided, oh, we want to move up to the northeast. We came on vacation. We were drawn to the beauty of the Hudson Valley. We picked Rhinebeck because it's like, when you look at all the statistical data, we're retired military, so we had to move every three years. And we picked, you know, Rhineback for the good schools, for the good hospital. And yes, we've only been here, you know, 10 years, but it's like, I want to tell you that I like the hospital-- I'm sorry, I haven't spoken publicly before. But being a neighbor, you know, I live right on Springbrook in the little gray house. I think it's beautiful what they're going to do, and I think it'll actually be prettier. I love the walking pass. And I just wanted to, you know, I heard this was going on and, you know, got the things in the mail, but I felt it was really important to come and say, you know, I think it's nice. All righty?
Good.[1041.61][1041.61](APPLAUSE). The next person is Steve Plotnick.
Hello. I've become interested in light because of my experience as an amateur astronomer, and what I discovered is that there's been a lighting revolution going on the last few years. Los Angeles has had all streetlights replaced by LED streetlights. LED stands for light emitting diode. Anyway, New York City has just recently started, they're going to put in light emitting diodes. I think we haven't explored, we've just scratched the surface of how much money the hospital could save with this better lighting. Yes, you spend more for an LED bulb, but the savings are tremendous, not only of the electricity you save on each one, but on the long span-- lifespan of the bulb. They last-- they last often for 20, 15, 20 years. So the point is, I hear we're getting the same kind of lighting we had earlier, metal halide. Metal halide's not a bad form of light, but it's not by any means on the forefront. And, you know, the thing is, this lighting will actually, I believe, save the hospital money. There's also something else I found out about called induction lighting. I just found out about it tonight. It's another whole area that could be explored. So the thing is, if we explore these areas, we may find we could actually save money on the lighting while improving the lighting. I would say that as presently designed, light will be a major impact on those of us who live near it. It will make a more-- must move more industrial sense-- sense of the area. Thank you.[1142.71][1142.71](APPLAUSE).
Next speaker is Dodd Crane.
Dodd Crane, village resident. Three brief comments. As you've heard the arguments tonight and the concerns, one of them is lighting. I'd like to just reiterate to the board that they should consider what that lighting looks like at night for six months of the year when there's little or no foliage, unless every-- virtually every tree is a pine tree. And that's one of my concerns that I've not heard discussed much at all, is for six months of the year, as you enter and exit the village, by my count, in the newly developed area over here, there'd be approximately 26 lights, and there are approximately 12 there now, depending on how you count. Those numbers may be a little off, but that's a rough count. That's been a concern of mine. The second thing I'd like to encourage HealthQuest and Kirchhoff builders to consider, and I've mentioned this in private as well, is that they maintain the current green space as it is and work on other temporaries. Some of them may be temporary, some of them may be permanent, alternate parking solutions, including some of the construction they're considering doing other parts of the sites, while their-- while their business plans develop to do two things. Be sure that, in fact, all the parking they're projecting that they need is really needed based on new business demand. And number two, in two to four years, with a different revenue stream, a parking lot, a parking garage might be totally within their financial capability. Third point, and this came up in some discussions we had with people who are familiar with development as it occurs in New York City. I don't know whether it's possible or not. I'm not that familiar with town and village law. But another point towards getting a parking garage perhaps sooner, locating on the back of the property, preserving all the green space that we want to preserve now, is to investigate with the village and the town the possibility of a tax abatement in return for construction of a parking garage. So you get the green space constructed, and the hospital gets additional funding to pay off the debt to build a parking garage. We estimated about debt service, I think, at about $330,000 a year on a $3 million parking garage, which would give them 200 spaces. Those numbers certainly can be debated and reworked, but there are a number of alternatives we don't think have been explored that can maintain the green space and give the hospital the parking that they need in order to grow their business, and I think those need to be explored. Thank you.
Thank you.[1301.58][1301.58](APPLAUSE). The next person is Andy Empirati.
If you could just spare a second time, I would just say that I'm in favor of the project, and let's move on.[1311.15][1311.15](APPLAUSE).
Next person is Colleen Crookshank.
Good evening. I'm Colleen Crookshank. I'm the Director of the Rhinebeck Area Chamber of Commerce, and I am also a village resident. I would just like to reiterate, I said this in a public hearing before, you know, one of the pleasures that I have is speaking with people, calling to talk about Rhinebeck and get more information, whether they're coming to visit or whether they're thinking of relocating. Relocation question, the hospital medical facilities are the first thing that come up. I'd like to continue to be able to say that, you know, we offer the finest care in this area. We're fortunate to have a small community hospital. I too grew up a military kid. I moved all over the place. I never had a family doctor until I moved here. I can go into the hospital now and know people. I've gone into the emergency room and been able to ask to see Dr. Savya. So to me, this is all very important, and I know it's a big reason why we're all here, and I know we all do support the hospital and this project. And from a personal note, I have delivered my babies at the birth center. I have had procedures there, both emergency and routine, and been a patient in the-- inpatient in the med-surg unit. And the staff deserves to operate in a facility that matches the level of their care and concern for us. So I think that, you know, this expansion, and it's not even so much an expansion, the improvement needs to happen, and it needs to happen swiftly. Thank you.
Thank you.[1399.15][1399.15](APPLAUSE). Next person is Paul Niedecorn.
I live at 132 East Market Street, the corner of East Market and Beach, what we consider the eastern gateway, and we make sure to make the eastern gateway look as nice as possible.[1473.33][1473.33](LAUGHTER). I too am a consumer of the hospital services, and the older I get, the more I consume, and I wish it weren't that way.[1482.51][1482.51](LAUGHTER). But as the technology and the standards change, obviously, a hospital has to modernize and upgrade. There are a number of constraints, at least two major constraints. Either you're going to modernize, by the way, or you're going to go out of business. The hospital is going to fold. We're going to have to go to Poughkeepsie or Kingston or God knows where for our services. But there's two major constraints that I can see, is the size of the campus, the area that is available for the hospital to expand into and to use. And the other is money. Now, I may be wrong, but I don't think HealthQuest is made of money. I don't think they really have the money even for this expansion without having the community help raise a number of millions of dollars to supplement whatever the other arrangements are. I know people are unhappy with Kirchhoff being part of it, but that's one of the ways to get the money. If you don't get the money that way, how are you going to get the money? And speaking of money, how much has already been spent going through iteration after iteration here? And the last question is, what happens now if this project gets turned down? We're going to have another iteration, another iteration, or are they just going to give up eventually? How much money can you spend? Thank you.
Thank you.[1572.83][1572.83](APPLAUSE). The next person is Susan Rich.
Hello. My name is Susan Rich. I'm a new homeowner here in Rhinebeck. I was attracted by the country setting and the culture and the greenery. I think I speak for a lot of other people who are just retired and might want to move here. Mention was made, I'm a little-- I'm fearful of what the hospital plans to do. I think that changes can be made with the space that is already available. Parking, extra parking, and tearing down green space for cars, I don't think is going to be a good thing for the village. And speaking of the village, it is a village, and I don't think the expansion of a hospital really belongs within a village framework. If the hospital needs to grow, I think it can find ways by making double-decker parking in the back by Kramer Road. It can use the thrift shop building. I think destroying the green space on the corner of Route 9 and Mon-- Montgomery, whatever, Mount Rutson Road is going to be very destructive because as you come down south from Stop and Shop, the whole-- and you make that bend, as somebody else mentioned, the feeling of peace and tranquility that you get from the historic houses that are situated at that bend, and the way that they're set back from the road with a large expanse of lawn, gives the whole village a feeling of, of, how should I say, of stateliness and grandeur. And I don't think that's something that you can find in other neighborhoods. And I would also say that the traffic situation at that corner would only be made worse. You already have a lot of truck traffic along 9G coming north from the village. If there is any delay at that corner, trucks are going to start backing up. There's going to be idling of diesel exhaust all along Route 9 back to the Village Center, and that's going to be very hard to handle, as well as any pedestrian traffic that would be caused-- that would go along these proposed sidewalks. So I'm really not prepared to speak except to just say that I'm kind of shocked and horrified that this beautiful place that I've just moved to might be spoiled by destruction of trees and green space. I think the green space that exists should stay. The hospital is fine the way it is. There are other places, like Poughkeepsie, for a large hospital to be situated. As far as I can see, this hospital is good for broken bones and things like that. I don't think it should be considered as a major place for surgery. So I think that's about it. Thank you.[1785.86][1785.86](APPLAUSE).
Thank you.
think it should be considered as a major place for surgery. So I think that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person, I apologize in advance, I can't really read the name it, David Woolnick?
Woolnick.
Okay, and I've been asked to announce the on-deck person, so we can speed things up a little bit. Kate Long will be speaking after David.
Okay, I'm David Woolnick. I'm from the village of Rhinebeck as well. Nice to see John. First of all, I'd like to say I am in favor of the hospital expansion. I have no problem with the hospital expansion. I just come down on the side that I think that preserving the green space is really, really important, and I would urge everybody to do as much compromise on this question as possible. I just came for my father's 100th birthday, I have to put that plug in. My father was a male clinic doctor for almost 40 years, surgical pathologist. I just came from the male clinic. My hometown has been sort of paved over by the male clinic, and hospitals need to grow, but you know, you have to be very cognizant of that sort of creeping disease. You start paving and expanding and paving and expanding. And I think a good public relations move on the part of the hospital would be to preserve as much of that green space, even more than they proposed. I congratulate them for making the changes they've made thus far, but I would go a step or two further. I think it'd be great for the village, you get more community support. And I totally agree that the entrance to the village is really, really important. Lastly, I'll just say that I bring people here to Hyde Park, I'm with the Rosemont Institute, from all over the world, and they just marvel at the sense of village, and that's very important, the sense of this being a village. And I think this risks losing that sense as you come in from the north. Thank you.
Okay, Kate Long, and the next person, I apologize, it's Yvonne Sassu, or Sassu?
Sarn.
Will be next?
Yvonne Sarn is next, following me. Good evening, my name is Kate Long. I live at 86 Montgomery Street, directly across from the hospital. I want to say, as many others have, that I support Northern Duchess Hospital. I support the care they provide to the community. I support those who earn their living there, and I more broadly support the right of all humans to affordable and high-quality health care. Since Northern Duchess is located in the belly of Rhinebeck's historic district and surrounded by nationally landmark homes, consideration of the impact of proposed expansion and increased usage must be examined very closely. Preservation of the historic beauty and green space of our village is critical, and state law requires this be accounted for in the review process. Unfortunately, the preparation of the environmental assessment form for this project by HealthQuest and Kirchhoff was cursory and incomplete. We have documented these oversights in our Article 78 action filed in State Supreme Court. But let me address one issue not covered in our Article 78, which is that professional medical offices are not allowed in a hospital according to the village code. But I did hear this evening, which is very new news on the part of the architect, that that space on the first floor of the expansion has been reduced to 5,000 square feet. That totally redoes the parking calculations for the space. In fact, it almost would eliminate any need to have parking on the front lawn, because most of the parking, projected additional parking, was generated by those eight for-profit medical offices and the high demand that medical offices give to traffic. And, well, we'll run the numbers, of course. I also wanted to address quickly the misleading information provided by HealthQuest in the local paper via paid advertisements, which relates to the number of trees that would be taken down in this project. I'm sure, as you know, many of you saw the larger, this is just a small part of it, the ad that was placed in The Observer, which is delivered to 9,000 people, which said that 34 trees would be taken down. And in fact, the Savitree report, their paid arborist, has said that 80 trees would be removed. I think it's a very corrupted approach on the part of HealthQuest to advertise in the community paper that 34 trees would be removed, when in fact, 80. I think the public process really needs to be allowed the full information to come out, and the community needs to know the facts. It's very similar to the parking analysis where 2011 data was used for 2013 analysis. It's just not a well-done process. And lastly, I'd like to present to the board a petition signed by over 500 people, which relates to this parking, this massive parking on the lawn, which of course was generated by the for-profit doctors' offices that were planned for the first floor. So thank you very much.
Okay, next person is Yvonne, and following her will be Gretchen Lyth.
Lythel.
Lythel, Gretchen Lythel.
Well, this is a surprise. I didn't know my name was Dan. However, I have a nursing background. I was administrator on transplant for quite a few years in Brooklyn, and now I own the B&amp;B right next to the hospital. I do agree that hospitals must keep up to date, they have to expand occasionally, and Duchess Hospital is a very fine hospital, which I have used personally over the last few years. Professionally now, with people coming up to stay in Rhinebeck for a couple of days, they really appreciate the greenery and they appreciate the feeling of Rhinebeck. It's peaceful and nice, and I don't think they want to come up to asphalt. I think that perhaps the parking could be handled differently than taking away the green space and those beautiful trees. I think professional parking for the people that work in the hospital seemed like a very good idea, but I think it really should be very important to save that, the front of the hospital, and maintain Rhinebeck and how beautiful it is. Thank you.
Thank you. After Gretchen will be Teresa Velardi.
Hi, I'm Gretchen Lythel, and I've lived in the village of Rhinebeck for 40 years, and I too have my stories of children and grandchildren in fine care at Northern Duchess. The advantage to being further down the list is that you've heard everybody else's ideas, and the disadvantage is you've all heard them all too. My sense is that there's a groundswell of support for updating the hospital. This really needs to happen. And the people with whom I've spoken do not object to that at all. The concern is mostly, and as I feel like it's been tonight, stated around the parking issues. And perhaps if there's been a change in the plans for the first floor, this will be less of an issue now. My thought in preparing for this was wanting to know how much thought had been going into the idea of a parking garage, which could be a long-term solution. Things may be fine for now with the parking that's available through the church, but it would be nice to have a long-term solution, and that in combination with perhaps valet parking would solve a lot of the problems for the visitors who come to the hospital. So I'm asking you to think more deeply about the parking issue. And preserving Rhinebeck, the identity has with its beautiful entries from all four fronts, east, west, north and south. Thank you.
Thank you. After Teresa will be Cynthia Phillip.
Being even further down the line means that I have only repetitions to say, but I do want to add one thing. I don't live in the village. My name is Teresa Velardi, and I live at 133 White Schoolhouse Road, which is outside of the village. The one advantage I feel I have right now is that I grew up in a town on Long Island, very much like Rhinebeck, very beautiful, where lots of people wanted to visit. And one of the things that ultimately destroyed the atmosphere and the way people felt about the place was the rampant amount of parking, of places that didn't have vegetation or trees. And I think the environmental impact of this project is important. I don't think the hospital is not important. In fact, I support the hospital, and I think its plans for the future are terrific, as was the hospital in the place where I grew up. But you have a wonderful opportunity, I think, to rethink the environmental implications and the aesthetic implications of this project. It's a different world than the world that I grew up in, and I think that in a way, HealthQuest and Northern Duchess have a wonderful opportunity to make something different of this expansion. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Cynthia Phillip, and after her is Reg Huff.
I have lived here for 37 years, and I came here when Rhinebeck was situated on an aquifer that was a sewage pit. There was no, as was mentioned by the first speaker, so that I followed it very carefully. I should also tell you, I'm a regional planner, and I feel that this should not be in the hands of only the village. A hospital is a regional thing. I live heavens in Rhine Cliff. I'm not a part of this gathering. And I do think that in order, we are living in an entirely different world as we heard, because take the new person who's going to be the head of this hospital, he's coming from Chicago, and he knows how to fire people. It is not this bucolic place that you've been speaking about before. It is a big money-making operation, HealthQuest is. I've just had work done on my eyes, and I know the ins and outs of how HealthQuest works, because the doctors have to make it clear to you, and they all belong to it. They all protect it, and they are all making money from it. We are going to be combating a mighty dragon, and I do think that it should be expanded further than just the village. It is not only a village affair. It is a great regional affair, and for serious things, you go to a different kind of hospital. It is not a little local hospital serving only the village. And I think that in order to gather the people together, that you're going to need, in order to even understand what's going on with HealthQuest, that it's important to make them a part of your quest, and I hope you will do that. You must know from looking at me that I don't have a vested interest in this. I am very old. I happen to be very healthy, but who knows what will happen tomorrow. And so that I think about it perhaps more abstractly. On the other hand, we should know, for instance, the seeker thing, when did the seeker process start? Could you answer that question for me? 2004?
2004 is when it started.
Okay, 2004. Who owned the hospital then?
Northern Duchess, HealthQuest.
In 2004?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so when did it begin to own it?
1999.
1999. Well, I was here for a long time by then, and I haven't had any illnesses. So that this is all done under HealthQuest. That's important for me to know. Thank you very much.
Reg Huff, and the next person, again, I can't read, Juan Monte, I think is the last?
Munoz.
Munoz, okay.
Yeah, I live in the village north of the hospital. I'm the one that wrote you a letter a number of months ago after the first meeting, and I emphasized a long-range plan. And I wasn't going to speak tonight. Pardon me? Okay, sorry about that. I was going to speak tonight, but from what I've heard from these people, that issue was not addressed very well, and all of the people that have come up here from the speaker situation, besides the professionals, expressed only that. The parking, the drainage, the green spaces, all of that, all depends on a very long-range plan. And now, these people are probably going to tell you, oh, we don't have money for that. But as a professional, I could tell you, it doesn't take a lot of money to do the kind of long-range plan you need. And I would ask for that, and I would get that, because that's the only way you're going to solve what I've heard tonight as the big complaint from all the villager people. And in order for you to do your job, you've got to have something like that to go by. I want to go home and go to bed, because these chairs are very hard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. First of all, I'm not a resident of Rhinebeck. I am a resident of the Hudson Valley and about 15 miles up the road. I volunteer at the Thompson House for the last five years, over five years I've been volunteering there. And so I'm very familiar with end-of-care treatment, with what this hospital really does. And I've been hearing also a lot tonight about kind of like demonizing a corporation that runs a healthcare facility. Okay, the reason why they have to merge and become a little bit larger, let's put it this way, because the hospital is operating on a local basis, but in order to be able to function today in the economy the way it is, and any other economy for that matter, it takes money. And it takes the joining of forces if you want to stay a hospital. If not, you'd have to just close it and we'd have to go somewhere else. And I'll tell you what, if I have an accident here, I really don't want to be sent to Vassar. I want to come to Northern Duchess. I see the care that's provided here. And those additions or those improvements are very necessary. And I hear a lot of bickering really about parking spaces. We have an engineer, I'm sure we have all the information, they have all the information they need in order to decide how many parking spaces we actually have to have. They're not going to allow them to have one more parking space than they need. That's a given. Okay? So let's not argue over blades of grass, okay, because that's what we're talking about. We're talking about blades of grass versus people, okay? Five minutes down the road can make the difference between living and dying, and I see it because I'm there, okay? And I volunteer. I don't get paid for this, okay? I do it, and I'm speaking today. I took my time to come over here because I think this is a regional issue. It's very important. It doesn't just serve Rhinebeck. So I don't know. Make the right choice.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak, who hasn't signed up on the sheet? Come up and state your name. Please be brief, it's been a long night.
No, I will be brief. Good evening, my name is Barbara Schutzman. I live outside of the village. My husband was affiliated with the hospital. He couldn't be here tonight. But you know, I've listened to a lot of things too. I would like to thank the planning board. I'm sure you've put in a lot of hours. I cannot imagine not having the hospital here. I've certainly had help from them as well. I just think that the planning board needs to have a public meeting and tell us how you see it. You know, we depend upon you to be that person who's going to do the right thing for the area. So I can't imagine so much more time being spent on this. Time is money. Loss of money doesn't help the situation. So I just wanted to thank you, and I wanted to ask you if you can come back to the public and give us your assessment as how you see it should go forward. That's about the only thing. I think we all want the hospital. I think we need the hospital. Blades of grass or more cement, I mean, I never understood why there wasn't a parking building from the beginning. I also know one thing, whatever these statistics are, in the last two years, I've spent a lot of time at this hospital. I live about two miles outside of the village. I go back and forth three, four, five times, and all I know is that I cannot find parking. I happen to have a disabled, I'm able to jump into that. When he's not with me, I try to park elsewhere. So in the course of the day, you know, I don't find that there's much in the way of parking. But again, I just ask you as the planning board to come back to us with your assessment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Someone else like to speak? Sally?
Good evening, Sally Mazzarella, and I live in the town of Rhinebeck.
And for some of you that don't know, my husband was the former CEO of Northern Duchess Hospital. So, that's the one hat that I wear of being so close to the importance of this incredible and extraordinary institution. The other is the importance of community planning. What's happening here tonight, I cherish, the public being able to come out and speak on behalf of what's important in their community and the quality of life that they enjoy and they want protected. So, that too is important. That green space in front of the hospital is important. You know, I heard so much about the town master plan and the gateway to Reinbeck. I worked on that for seven years. I know how important the gateway to Reinbeck is and that green space in front of the hospital. And when I initially saw the plans and some 100 parking spaces in that green space, that yes, makes a very important statement as you enter a village setting, to see the tranquility, that open space that I think we all cherish in this community, I called upon Joe Kirchhoff, and he spread out his plans on my kitchen table, and we talked about, you know, what could happen, what needed to be changed? Was there the potential to accommodate the parking needs and protect as much of that open space as possible? And I know there were meetings from members of the community and the steering committee. And Joe did come back and rolled out another plan, and that 100 spaces went down to some 12 handicap parking spaces. And to me, that made a tremendous statement about the people at Northern Duchess Hospital still cared not only about the quality of healthcare, but the quality of life in this community. And so I commend them, and I respect that. I'm not sure if the alignment of that parking could be improved upon, and if there's the potential for that, that should happen. But I know those handicap spaces at the front of the hospital are critical. They're important. I know I need it. I know my husband needs it, and I've seen a lot of other canes in this room tonight. And I see a lot of other aging people like myself. So, we do need those spaces, and I think there has been a tremendous compromise made. I found it very interesting hearing the woman from the Tree Commission. I also had that same sense, that Northern Duchess Hospital, in trying to appease the community, they were planting and planting and planting, and those rolling lawns were going to be lost. Whatever we care about and we felt special was going to be lost. So, there are other ways. They talked about the landscaped islands, you know, be a little bit more conservative as to how you plant that front lawn, and I thank you for protecting as much as you have. I think you've made a tremendous statement, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally. She said it? Okay. Thank you, David. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Just quickly, for the benefit of the board, there seems to be some confusion about the statements I made about the program that was going on the first floor of the new addition. I had stated that there's approximately 25,000 square foot of footprint, which matches what's going on above on the second and third floors. 7,000 square feet of that is public space, so it's mechanical, electrical, corridors, security offices. 14,000 of that is non-for-profit doctors' offices. Non-for-profit still needs parking spaces. It has nothing to do with their need to serve patients, whether they're for-profit or non-for-profit. So, the parking need is still there regardless of their tax qualification. The 5,000 square feet that may be leased to for-profit doctors, which could later be allocated to the hospital because of their own personal needs, will still require parking. So, I just wanted to clarify that, because there was some confusion.
Could you clarify for the public the difference between a for-profit doctor and a non-for-profit doctor?
I'm Dave Payne with Health Quest. So, Health Quest Medical Practice is a position formed by Health Quest. It is a 501(c)(3) organization, as opposed to Mount Kiskel Medical Group, Umen Hudson Medical Group, which are for-profit institutions.
And the current plan is that that building can still be owned by Northern Duchess, or be owned by Kirchhoff?
That entire building will be owned by Northern Duchess Hospital.
Just to clarify the issue for the public, the Village Code says that for every thousand square feet of hospital, you need two and a half parking spots. For every thousand square feet of medical offices, because the intensity is greater, you need five parking spots. And that's the issue that needs to be clarified as we go forward, to make sure that we have not one more spot than is required by the code for the hospital space versus the doctor's office. For profit or non-for-profit, a doctor's office requires five parking spots per thousand. So, we will clarify that with the engineer. Once we get to look at the plans, we'll do the calculations and figure out what they need. Jim wanted to speak. Okay. We need to try to, you know, close this up, because we have a long thing. Hmm? Yeah, one or two more.
Thank you. My name is Rob Long. I no longer live here in the village, but I still own some property right across the street from the hospital. And first off, I want to thank the planning board, thank the folks from Health Quest. I'm also very uniquely, I happen to own the largest newspaper in New York State that goes to the whole nonprofit community, so I'm very familiar with nonprofit versus for-profit in the medical world. And I have a few things. The hospitals was really great to me. I really appreciate it. But as far as the traffic goes, I happen to live right there, I used to live on that corner. There would be an accident. I don't know who's counting for New York State or the police, but believe me, there's an accident there at least once every six months. It's, and so, and that's a tough corner everyone knows. And interestingly enough, I haven't really been paying too much attention to this. I came tonight because I knew this was a public forum. This is really the most I've heard and learned, and it's been very informative. And I've been in business like a lot of folks here, and really, it kind of seems like this almost is a really easy fix. I mean, this is just about money. And with a parking garage in the back, you're actually planning much for in the future, where you don't have to even deal with this issue down the road. And it just seems to be like, almost a no-brainer. I don't see why the stigma over this, that way you satisfy your current needs and your future needs. And so, I'd really urge, I'd urge a parking garage. I don't see where it hurts you. It can only help you. It definitely costs more money, but it's money that's well-spent. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Okay.
Good evening. Jim Reardon, mayor of the village of Reinbeck. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. A lot of times, we have village board meetings, and there's not a person in the room. And it happens more often than not, believe me. So, it's great to see a community turn out. You folks all have concerns, and it's great that you're here to express your concerns and your support. Am I pro-hospital expansion? Yes. Why is that? Because I'm pro-Reinbeck. The hospital's a critical ingredient of this community, just like the fairgrounds is, just like the not-for-profit sector is, just like the residents are. Every one of those pieces fits into a puzzle that makes this the special community that it is. Peggy Howe spoke before, and she was talking about some of the old days, and there's some of us here that can remember this. And Williams Lumber was right where this building stands today. And the Copper Kettle Restaurant used to be where the Reinbeck Savings Bank parking lot is. 47 West Market Street used to be an AMP. The CVS used to be Kilmer's, and that's recent history where that's gone away. There's a lot of things that have changed in Reinbeck. Where the bagel shop is, used to be the Ford Garage, you know? What's my point here? My point here is that communities change and communities evolve, all right? I got on the board in 2007, and at that time was appointed deputy mayor. And sadly, a year later, Richard Cunningham, who was the mayor, got sick, and I had to take over. So, basically, since 2008, I've been doing the mayor's job. Three terms that I've been elected, 2009, 11, and 13. My whole mantra as a mayor has been to bring a community together. And that's what this whole process with the planning board is about, and that's what the whole process with the village board is about. We're talking about a critical ingredient of this community, Northern Duchess Hospital, which we all need to succeed. So, how do we make that happen? We come together and we figure out a way to do it. We don't file lawsuits and fight each other. We don't point fingers and scream and holler. We come together and make this work. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Is there anyone else? Because we have more items on the agenda tonight. I apologize to the applicants who've come forward.
No, nobody.
Right. So, if not, then I'd like someone to make a motion to close the public hearing.
I will.
Seconded.
All those in favor?